Welcome to the Kern County Planning Commission's regular meeting of tonight, July 14, 2022. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ashley.
Here.
Commissioner Judge.
Here.
Commissioner McGiffney.
Here.
Commissioner Skidmore.
Here.
Commissioner Sprague. Mr. Hall.
Here.
Mr. McNamara.
Here.
Ms. Simon.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item on the agenda, Commissioner member announcements or reports. Do we have any Commissioner announcements tonight? Hearing done. Go to the next item, approval of the minutes for June 9th and June 23rd. Do I have a motion for approval?
Move to approve the minutes from the, I think both meetings, right? The 9th and the 23rd.
I have a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Chair is aye. Motion's approved. Item D, cases withdrawn or request continued, we have none. Item E is our consent agenda. These are items scheduled before the planning commission, which are being recommended for approval by the staff, and the applicant has been informed of any special conditions and has no objection. The hearing on these items may be expedited if no member of the commissioner audience wishes to comment or ask questions on the case. We have three items on the consent agenda, items 3, 4, and 5. Ms. Simon?
Thank you, Chairman McGiffney, and good evening, Commissioners. We have three cases on the consent agenda. The first case is item number three, that's CUP 115 MAP 102-13. The applicant is Louis and Arasayli, excuse me, Treheo by Todd Burley. This is a conditional use permit to allow new construction of a 1,740 square foot single-family dwelling in a C2 district on an approximate 5,662-foot square lot, square-foot lot. The project is located at 619 North Chester Avenue in unincorporated Bakersfield. Your commission has received a copy of two, no comments, in regard to this project this evening. Therefore, staff recommendation continues to be to approve the conditional use permit in accordance with the recommended conditions and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the attached draft resolution. The next case is item number four, CUP 6 MAP 34. The applicant is AT&amp;T Mobility by Jeremy Siegel. This is a conditional use permit to allow 150-foot-tall lattice wireless communications facility on a 1,225-square-foot leased portion of a 19-acre parcel in an A district. The project location is east of the intersection of Kite and Neal Avenue in unincorporated McFarland. Staff recommendation is to approve the conditional use permit in accordance with the recommended conditions and adopt the suggested findings. And finally, the last case is item number five on the consent agenda. That is a modification to CUP number 55 MAP 102 that was approved February, that was originally approved February 10, 2011. The applicant is MTS Stimulation Services, Inc. by Swanson Engineering. The proposal is an expansion of the project site and to relocate eight of the 16 existing semi-truck and heavy truck parking spaces. A total of 16 heavy truck spaces will remain in compliance with the original approval and would not expand the use on the site. This is all on an approximate 6.7-acre parcel in the M2PD district. The site is located approximately 2,000 feet west of Fruitvale Avenue in unincorporated Bakersfield. Staff recommendation is to approve conditional use permit modification subject to the recommended conditions and adopt the suggested findings. This concludes the reading of the consent agenda this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Simon. Hearing the items on consent, do I have a motion to approve?
Commissioner McGiffney issued your request if anyone wants to see these items heard prior to our motion?
Sorry, I thought I read that already, but any member of this, any member of this audience wish to pull these, discuss these at all? Hearing none, does any member of the commission have any, need to discuss this? Okay.
With that, I will make the motion to approve the consent agenda as read into record.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
For our eyes one absent, the motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, our next item on the agenda is public presentations.
Chairman McGiffney, would you like me to read the appeal?
I'm sorry, read the appeal, please, if there is.
Sure, no problem.
I'm sorry about that.
That's all good. For projects where the planning commission action is final, which all three of these are, actions are subject to appeal to the Board of Supervisors by any interested person, and no development proposed by any application may be authorized until the final date of appeal. An appeal may be filed with the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department at 2,700 M Street, Suite 100, Bakersfield, with a filing fee of $540 on forms that are available at the Planning and Natural Resources Department and on the website. Filing must be made within 14 days of and including the date of the hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Simon. My apologies for skipping that. Next item on the agenda is item F, public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons attempting to address the commission on any matter not on this agenda and over which the commission has jurisdictions. Jurisdictions, speakers are limited to two minutes. Please state your name and address before making any presentation. Do we have any public presentations on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, now we move to public hearings. Ms. Simon?
Thank you, Chairman McGiffney, and good evening, Commissioners. This evening, we're going to start with appeal case number one, map number 124-32. This is a different case than your commission has seen in the past. In fact, I don't believe your commission has seen an appeal of a violation decision made by the hearing officer before. So this is a first. As a little background, part of the processing of projects the staff must go through is first reviewing the application when it comes in through a preliminary review process. And part of that is making sure the application is complete and also doing an evaluation of the site and confirming if there are any active violations occurring on site. The reason for this is Chapter 19.114, the Enforcement and Penalties Chapter, requires that any land use that is in violation in Kern County and under the Kern County ordinances cannot continue to be processed by staff as a land use application until determination is made that either abatement of the violation is completed or specific findings can be made that the continued operation can be made during the processing of whatever proposal that might be. So through staff research, code compliance had a complaint that called on the property and an investigation had started on this particular site. The investigation found that the site contained an operating and continuing operation of a truck facility, of which the appellant claims is limited to agricultural products, including accessories that do not have any building permits and, excuse me, and they do not have a legal address for the site, for 911 or any other permits that may be applicable to the site. So this hearing is to determine if the applicant must stop operating on site while the processing of the conditional use permit and the required building permits are being evaluated, or if there can be found specific stipulations and that all five findings of the violation findings are, can be made. Consideration of the proposed conditional use permit for permanent approval or denial is not before your commission at this time. So the site currently contains a trucking facility that operates with approximately 24 semi-trucks, including trailers on site, a large pole barn, and a minimum of three cargo containers. One of the cargo containers appears to have been converted to an office with a window, door, and air-conditioned unit welded into the side of the container. The pole barn appears to be a housing area for repairing of trucks. Carports appear to be a storage of standard vehicles, and the site includes the storage of inoperable vehicles. The site is enclosed with various corrugated metal panels, tarp draped over fencing, including a chain-link fence with barbed wire with an automatic electric gate. Pole lights and security cameras are positioned around the site as well. The site contains porta-potties, pieces of equipment, welders, metal scraps, tires, and the surface material of the site is primarily dirt. The abutting site to the east is a large, established, single-family subdivision. To the south is a mix of single-family dwellings and small businesses, and to the west is South Union, and to the north are vacant parcels and single-family dwellings. This site does have a history with code compliance over the years and includes a complaint regarding the use of unauthorized electricity and water. Consideration of the violation findings was heard on April 21, 2022, where Craig Murphy, Assistant Director of the Kern County and National Natural Resources Department, acting as the hearing officer, addressed the need for clarification of the type of agricultural items being hauled as part of the trucking facility. Additionally, concerns were cited regarding fugitive dust, safety of the on-site structures, and the lack of building permits. The hearing officer also stated it was a crucial concern that the site does not have an assigned address to use for emergency services, then that would be ultimately problematic should an accident occur on site. Mr. Murphy explained the current use of the site was found to be in violation per Section 19114 of the Kern County zoning ordinance, where all five findings could not be made to allow retention of activities or items on site. Specifically, the retention of the current use of the property would likely result in significant health, safety, or welfare impacts on the property to persons or the surrounding properties. Mr. Murphy instructed the project applicant to cease operations and remove all trucks on site within 60 days. Mr. Murphy then instructed staff to cease processing of the conditional use permit until the project applicant has fully abated the existing violations. I'm gonna take a quick drink of water, sorry. Following that decision, the applicant made an appeal within the appropriate amount of time, and so now we are here. The appeal is considered de novo, specifically meaning the consideration of this hearing is not limited to the hearing officer's decision. As mentioned earlier, the purpose of today's hearing is not to consider the conditional use proposal, but rather the consideration of the appeal of the hearing officer's decision to cease existing operations and remove all trucks on site within 60 days, including instructions for staff to cease processing of the conditional use permit application until the applicant has abated all the existing violations. One of the steps this evening is for your commission to determine if a violation is or is not occurring on site. Because the appellant has confirmed the existence of all the noted violations on site in their material, appeal materials, excuse me, your commission must then evaluate enforcement findings of Section 19.114020C of the zoning ordinance, or an application for the property found in violation of the zoning title cannot be processed until all five findings have been made and as stated in the staff report. At a minimum, it is staff's determination that finding number one cannot be made, which centers on the violations on site will be likely potentially significant, have a potential significant impact to health, safety, and welfare on the property or surrounding properties. Staff believes the finding cannot be made for several reasons where staff is concerned. The use of the unauthorized electricity on site, where the appellant does state that the use is only an electric generator on site. However, the use of the generator can potentially be a fire risk because of the uses on site that demand, demand power such as pole lights, security cameras, welders, the converted cargo container that includes AC and electricity, tools used for potential repairs, and the electronic for front gate. Staff confirmed that an address has not been assigned to the property, as there has not been a use on site where the planning department could merit assigning an address. Therefore, infrastructure for the site, including utilities such as water and electricity, cannot be approved through agencies for the property until appropriate approvals have been made for the use on site. However, it does appear that the electric gate continues to be in use and the pole lights as well. With all this in mind, the possibility of the electricity being used on site that has not been properly installed, reviewed, or approved could pose a health and safety risk to users of the site as well as neighboring properties. Additionally, without water on the site, should an emergency occur, water would not be available, and that could pose a safety issue as well. All the structures on site, including the converted cargo container that uses electricity, do not have approved building permits associated with them. The appellant states the repairs have ceased on site. However, should persons be underneath these structures for any reason, this could pose a safety issue should an event happen where the structure could collapse. Cargo containers are also required to be installed on permanent foundation, which these are not. An evaluation has not yet been conducted, at a minimum, to determine the impacts regarding gas, dust, from the continued truck movement, semi-truck exhaust for air quality impacts, potential noise of running of refrigeration trucks overnight or repairs, light from unshielded light poles, and therefore impacts to the surrounding residential developments are unknown at this time. Because of these concerns, at a minimum, staff continues to agree with the hearing officer that this finding cannot be made and recommends the hearing officer's determinations to be upheld and to cease existing operations and to remove all trucks on site within 60 days. The appellant's representative has a presentation for your commission this evening, and part of that presentation includes aerials of other sites that appear to be what is currently happening on the subject property. Staff has reviewed these aerials, and two of these sites are in active violation. One is with our department, and the other is with code compliance. Several of the other sites are located within the city of Bakersfield's jurisdiction. Several of these sites are zoned industrial, which is widely different than the zoning of the subject property, which is agricultural. There are a few sites that either have been evaluated and have approval, and because they are in the proximity of a residentially zoned property, have the conditions of approval that have to be met by the property owners of those properties. Otherwise, the other projects that are in violation are going through the same process as the appellant. However, this decision before your commission is not about the location of other sites or what may or may not be similar to what is happening on site, or the proposal of the conditional use permit. But the current operation on site does not have any safety, does not have any safety protections on site, including real fire protection by having an address that 911 can access, or an additional, an electrical permit for the uses on site. And staff continues again to agree with the hearing officer that even the moving of trucks in and out of the site could create potentially significant health, safety, or welfare impacts on the property or surrounding properties. Because the violation has been acknowledged on site, these are the following options. Should your commission make all the required findings, the final decision may contain stipulations deemed necessary to limit potentially significant health, safety, or welfare impacts on the property or surrounding properties. Or, should your commission Or, should your commission find that not all of the findings can be made, the appellant must cease all activities onsite, including the removal of trucks, and instruct staff to cease all the processing of the application until such time that the activities have been fully abated onsite. Staff is sympathetic with the position that the applicant is in regarding ceasing of the activities onsite in terms of the monetary impact. However, there are many safety concerns that we have analyzed on the site that were too great for us to recommend stipulations in April, in the April hearing, or at the hearing today. There are too many variables in terms of the structures onsite without permits, and that there are no formal records for 911 to respond correctly to the site. Because of this, staff has found it difficult, at best, to recommend stipulations that may not result in a de facto approval of the proposed conditional use permit, which has not been evaluated by staff, other county departments, or agencies. Because the proposed conditional use permit is not part of the purpose of this hearing, that makes things very difficult for us. Therefore, staff believes that at a minimum, finding number one of Section 19114.020C cannot be met regarding the safety onsite for persons or the surrounding property. Therefore, staff recommendation is to deny the appeal and instruct the project applicant to cease operations and remove all trucks onsite within 60 days, and instruct staff to cease processing the conditional use permit until the project applicant has fully abated the existing violations, and instruct staff to send a referral to the Kern County Code Compliance Division to initiate the process of disconnecting any illegally obtained electricity or water onsite for safety reasons, and adopt this resolution and recommended findings. Also, I'd like to note that Code Compliance Officer Michael Pitchford is in the audience in case you have any questions for him, and otherwise, staff has concluded the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Simon. I believe we have a presentation then from the appellant.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Chris Mink. I'm with QK, and I'm representing the Rangie family, which is also Cat Inc., the owners of this property tonight. Let me see if I can walk and talk and operate this thing at the same time.
Get this.
I honestly don't know even.
Can I just tell you? Okay, that works.
We'll help manually here.
That's what I'm going to say. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Next slide, please. All right, I first wanted to start off by saying that, you know, Ms. Simon did state that the applicant has taken the understanding that they are in violation, that there's violations onsite. When they purchased this property in 2010, or when they purchased the business, rather, in 2010, and the property in 2014, they were not aware of violations that were onsite. They were not aware that they needed a permit, albeit that that is not a reason for not getting a permit. The applicant, once they were notified by code compliance, jumped into action to try to take some steps towards rectifying some of these violations. One of the other points I wanted to make early on is that the county CUP process, albeit pretty straightforward, can take several months to go through. This is, I think, very important in this case, as you guys make your determination tonight, because there are some unknowns. Staff has asked for a mitigated negative declaration to be prepared for the project, which the applicant is willing to pay for. That's upwards of $50,000 to do, but what they can't control is how long it takes to process the application. There are many standards that the county has to go through: review process, sending out the mitigated negative declaration for public circulation, hearing notices, and then ultimately going back to your commission for action on the CUP. And so, you know, this process is lengthy. It can take six, nine, 12 months to get through that process. So I just want you to understand a little bit about where we're coming from in this matter. If it was something where we could be before your commission in a couple of weeks, then I think we wouldn't have been here. We would have just moved forward and tried to process that request, but in this light, it is going to take us a little bit of time, and staff a little bit of time, to process the request. Also, you know, since our violation hearing, the applicant has taken quite a few steps towards abating many of the violations onsite. As I go through my presentation, we'll talk a little bit about kind of the chicken and the egg, what you can and can't abate due to the way the county process works. And then finally, just right here, I wanted to mention that, you know, this is a small family trucking facility. This is their sole business, their local residents of Kern County. They wouldn't have any income for that several months while we process this request, and to us, that's just an undue hardship. I think that as we go through, the applicant can make some concessions and fix some things that would help to mitigate those potentially significant violations, and then allow your commission to make a recommendation tonight to support our appeal. Next, please. This is a site plan that we submitted to the county. Ms. Simon is correct, that is not before you tonight, but I did want to show what it is that the operation looks like. It's a very simple operation, 24 trucks, Monday through Saturday, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., you know, one employee onsite, and, you know, the trucking industry is one where the logistics is, if your trucks aren't out operating, you're not making money. So most of the time, the site does not have, you know, 24 trucks on it. They want those trucks out moving product. That's how you make money in the industry. There is an existing pole barn that is unpermitted and a carport onsite, and in this picture, we're showing a proposed commercial coach, where we would be seeking a permit if the CUP was ultimately approved, to abate some of those violations. Next slide, please. Here's some current photos of the site as of yesterday, and, you know, I wanted to walk through a couple of these so you can see the progress that the applicant or the appellant has taken in this matter. They have removed all water and electrical that was running outside the property. They've severed those lines. They've cleaned up the site. Next slide, please. Here's another picture with a couple trucks in it. You can see it's a very clean site. Next slide. And then here, you can see, this is the carport. They've stopped using the carport right now. They park outside of the carport area. What happens is drivers come in with their personal vehicles, they leave their personal vehicle onsite, they go out, they drive the trucks, they come back, get back in their personal vehicle. It would be convenient to park in the carport, but because it's not a permitted structure, my client has decided that we cannot use that carport at this time. The pole barn as well, you can see there, it's been cleaned up, it's not being used. It was being used for minor repairs. Trucks break down from time to time. You know, as a trucking operator, you'd want to do, you know, run a diagnostic, look to see if it's a simple fix, maybe it's, you know, you need to fill up the radiator or something, versus having to have to send it off to have like a full engine repair. So that's what they would do there, is just minor repairs, but they have ceased that operation currently. Next slide, please. Here's a timeline of kind of the events, and it gets important to talk about. As I mentioned, prior to 2010, the property was operating with a trucking facility. In 2010, the Rangies purchased the trucking operation. The previous owner retained the land. After four years, they were able to save up and pay off the note on the land, and took ownership in 2014. And from 2014 until April of 2021, they operated the facility. In April of '21, they received their first code compliance notice. The Rangies, you know, didn't understand what it is that the county was asking them for. They sought out my office. We jumped into action and submitted a CUP application in August of 2021. In February of 2022, about six months later, we received our letter, preliminary letter, from the planning department, and at that time, they told us that we would be going to a violation hearing. And as Ms. Simon said, that violation hearing was in April, and the decision was ultimately to not allow the trucking operation to continue. I did have discussions at the hearing with Mr. Murphy, but ultimately, he decided that we needed to cease operation. Next slide, please. These are the infamous slides that Ms. Simon was referring to. As you can see in this picture, this is a permitted facility in the city of Bakersfield, but nonetheless, a permitted facility on Union Avenue. There's more than 80 trucks onsite, and I think it's not about whether or not it's in the city or the county. I think health, safety, and environment transcend, you know, jurisdictional boundaries. I think what's important here is that we note that there are trucks parked along the property lines, and those property lines are actually adjacent to single-family residential. Next slide, please. Here are two other ones as well. As you can see, single-family residential along Union Avenue. Next slide. Here's an auto dismantling. There's quite a few of those along Union Avenue. Maybe even a higher impact to neighboring residential than a trucking operation, but these are adjacent to single-family as well. Next slide. Here's a facility on plans in South Union that's actually adjacent to an elementary school. You can see there, there's trucks parked right up to the property line, and there's actually a building that is a maintenance building onsite. And then here's one with about four or five trucking operations on it, and then a picky part to the north, all adjacent to single-family residential. And then we come to this one, this is, the green is the project site, the Rangie site, and then the yellow there is a facility that I think is probably in violation, but as you can see, adjacent to single-family residential. And the reason why I bring this up is because it is very common to see these facilities along Union Avenue and being adjacent to single-family residential. And what that tells me is that there is a path forward for being able to minimize impacts, and I think it's important that we talk about minimizing impacts versus what is a significant impact versus no impact at all, right? That's a big difference, and I think that in this case, my client has put up a double layer of fencing, has put up landscaping. These things don't require a permit, but they do provide some buffer between the site operation and the residence. Next, please. This is a little technical, but I think it's worth mentioning. The city of Bakersfield annexed the site to the east. The original property plus the site to the east were all part of the county. They were all zoned A, and somebody came in in 1992 and asked the county to rezone it to R1 for single-family residential, and that was approved. And what the county does typically, if there's not a tract map, they go ahead and put the R1 in suspense. And so what happened is, is later on, somebody came in, annexed into the city, and built their tract, and effectively orphaned these four properties, my client's property plus the three down in the north, kind of creating this awkward situation where these properties in the county and not in the city, they should be in the city, but that's not what happened. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, those properties that are adjacent, there are three residential houses, single-family houses that are in the tract to the east, and then there's one large ranchette to the south. When the Rangies and I first got together on this project, we went out and canvassed the neighborhood. We wanted to see if there was opposition and what we could do to help minimize that, and it actually turns out that we were able to get support letters from all four of the adjacent properties. So each person that's currently occupying those four houses gave us a letter in support of the CUP, and we've provided that to the city. I think that's important to note, because when you're talking about immediate offsite significant impacts, those would be the four residences that are the most impacted. Next slide, please. As Ms. Simon mentioned, you know, there are five findings that your commission has to make tonight. Three of those, number two, three, and five, I think we all agree that those findings can be made. It's really a matter of finding one and four, and so I want to talk a little bit about those. Next slide, please. Just real quickly, finding four was that, you know, it felt like staff was a little unclear about what operation we were seeking. We are seeking an agricultural trucking operation. We're more than happy to continue to work with staff to try to provide any additional information that they need to feel comfortable with that, but that is our request, and that was our application materials. And then when we get to finding number one, I think this is the one that Ms. Simon talked about the most, and I think there's a path forward here. There are a few items, one being the unpermitted structures. I think that it's important to note that we cannot fully abate those unpermitted structure violations with, short of completely removing the facilities themselves. The county will not issue a building permit on a site that does not have land use approval first, and so this is a product of a chicken and egg, like I talked about. What we can do is we can avoid those structures onsite. We can temporarily fence them off, we could even remove the roof of the structure and just leave the poles in place until such time as we come back before your commission with a CUP application. The utilities, the utilities have been severed from the site, as I talked about, and so the applicant has decided not to get those, not to use unpermitted power until we can obtain permits, but again, without being able to have land use approval, it would be nearly impossible to get water and power to the site. Finally, trucking repairs occurring onsite, again, like I mentioned, the pole barn has been, they've stopped using the pole barn, and we can do similar thing to the carport and fence it off, or block it off so that it's not being used while we go through this process. And then finally, the addressing. We would be more than happy to apply for an address permit, but I do know that addressing is assigned by the planning department, and the planning department will not assign an address to somebody that does not have land use approval. So again, we're back to this chicken and egg, where we cannot get an address without having land use approval. If the county would be willing to give us an address, we would apply for an address, pay the 75 bucks, and get an address right now. As far as fire goes, I haven't heard anything from the fire department saying that they felt like this was a significant impact. It is very common that sites throughout the county do not have fire hydrants next to them. The county fire trucks are equipped to deal with these. They oftentimes have water onsite, or they can get water nearby. So I haven't heard anything from the fire department. They were notified of this project, and they did not comment, so that typically makes it sound to me like they don't think that there's a significant impact here. Next slide, please. And so in summary, you know, we feel that requiring the owner to cease all operations would really be an undue financial hardship. It's unfair for them. They've been operating peacefully for, you know, over a decade, and to now just rip that out from underneath them and make them completely shut down, remove everything off of the site to process the CUP, seems like we're taking it a step too far. We can do things to help, you know, eliminate some of those violations. We've already taken significant We've already taken significant steps in that matter, and I think there's probably some things that we can do with, with the direction from your commission. And so I just wanted to say that I think, you know, based on some of these points that I've made tonight, I think that your commission should be able to make the five findings. And this concludes my presentation, and I'm here and the applicant is here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there members of the community who'd like to speak about this project as well? Please come up, state your name. Oh yeah, two, two minutes.
My name is Jagde Rangi.
Could you please spell for the record here? Thank you.
J A G D E E P. Last name is Rangi, R A N G H I.
Thank you.
And we're a small trucking company that operates out of that site, and we've been operating there for over a decade at this point. We're not sure what changed since April. We've had no incidences regarding safety for over a decade. I don't know what changed since April to where all of a sudden we are a, a safety hazard to the county. We don't want to run head-on-head with the county. We want to work with the county to address these issues. And a lot of the, a lot of the stuff that the, the staff has brought up, we've addressed those issues. For example, the generator has been sold, has been taken off the property. A lot of the scrap metal has been cleaned up, it's been taken off the property. And we're not a nuance to our neighbors at all. We're actually very friendly with them. And not only do we feed our family with this business, we actually, there's 30 employees, drivers that also, some of them are here, that also work with us. And, you know, we're a net benefit to this community and to the county. We pay our taxes on time, and we work, we want to work with the county to get our permits, and we want to continue to operate until we get these permits. We've been trying to address this issue since April of last year, but the county's been taking so long to get back to us to what we need to fix, and that we haven't been able to do so. And to also tell us now that we need to cease operation, I feel like it's, is injustice. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
My name is Giovanni Ramirez. Do you need me to spell that?
Yes, please.
G I O V, as in Victor, A N N I, last name R A M I R E Z. I'm employed with Cat Inc., and I just wanted to let you folks know that. These folks here that I've been working for, for about four years now, some of the kindest, hardest-working people that I've ever met. I'm honored to work for them. To have to seize operations, man, that'd be just completely devastating for not only them, you know, and, but also me and, and my fellow employees. And I just, I urge you to give us a chance to correct all the, all, all the mistakes that are being, that need to be handled. Let us continue to operate. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? Please come forward. It's dark back there, so come on up.
Good evening. My name is Rajvir Gill, R A J V I R G I L L. I want to tell you guys, these people don't let code enforcement guy to go in. How you can trust them? They will do this, they will do that. You cannot trust these people, because inspector went two, three times, they don't let him go in. Second thing, they have 17, 18 trucks, whatever they have, none of truck is comply with California smog. All trucks, they are, you know, bypassed. They're not, they're not smog, they cannot pass the smog. They paid $3,000 to bypass it, but they don't want to repair that. So this is, that one is dangerous for all California public, not only Kern County people. Second thing, he never did anything legal. He always does illegal stuff. We have a church. We can pull a permit, no problem, but they did not pull a permit because he's the secretary over there, and we have a lot of code violation. I actually didn't get a chance to go to get the paperwork. I don't have with me. But if you check 6700 Stein Road, you will see how many code violation they did over there. They're building without permission. And that place have addressed everything, they can do whatever they want. Third thing, they know they are doing illegal from 2014. They told us so many times, because we usually go there, repair our trucks, and they're lying. You know, I think maybe this person representing them, maybe he get a good money, so he, he trying to paint a good picture. Another thing, I think if county want to approve them, they must need a traffic signal over there, so they can make a left turn safely, so people don't get hurt. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else like to speak about this project? Seeing none, I'd like to further back to the commission members here. And I know Mr. Judge wanted to speak. You have the floor, Mr. Judge.
Thank you, Chairman McGiffney. I, I'd first like to state that I appreciate the comments my staff today over the project. And I understand that findings are important. There's five of them we have to look at. And out of all the findings, number one, health and safety has been the most concerning. That's what was brought up. And that, to me, I'd like to address three items that were brought up, about the health, the safety, structure, 911. On the health side, I look at what the violations were and what the applicant has tried to do to, to correct these violations. And looking at the current situation provided by the applicant, you can see they've taken the effort to find a solution here, find a way to correct the problems they're dealing with by clean the facility up. One of the items that staff had a concern with was with electrical and water being on site. But I do read in our staff report that the code compliance division was unable to even evaluate the claim regarding the water and, and electrical on site, but applicant said they didn't even remove that regarding access fire 911. As a developer, I do understand it's difficult to process certain things in certain directions. And I know it's difficult to be able to perceive an application if you don't have an address, and sometimes there's guidelines you have to follow, which sometimes make it difficult, especially for people that don't do this on a daily basis. Looking at this applicant, they've been operating this business for over 10 years. They've been putting the time and effort with their community, trying to work, trying to build their business up. And I feel they've done what they can as they're understanding to operate their business. And this currently is an ag use site. And without an address, we have a lot of these properties that current county don't have addresses. He has every right to farm his property and put tractors out there. If tomorrow a tractor caught on fire, we had to call 911, it wouldn't change the situation. It would, it'd be the same type of opportunity to get on site versus it being a truck or a tractor. So I, I think that finding to me is, is, is not something that'd be a, a large violation or a large concern when it comes to health and safety, because even if the property was required as environmental, as ag use, it would still have the same concerns brought up as mentioned earlier. So with that, I, I feel that the applicant has made the effort to correct whatever issues they can. And the issue I see here is, we in current county, especially with the current conditions, we should try helping businesses develop and grow. We have people sitting in this crowd that are feeding their families. This trucking facility not only feeds the operators, but the people that work for them. The facility is not being used as a retail facility where they're having truckers coming in and charging people to repair. They're repairing their own vehicles that they own and operate in their own site. I also feel that with the current economic conditions, you know, we already have enough supply chain issues as it may be with people that, truckers on roads, being able to deliver product. I think that if there's a way for us to find a path to allow business to operate, especially in these hard economic times, and process the applications through our county, I think we should try and find a way to get that accomplished. And looking at the timeline, what is difficult to see is the applicant applied last April, where, I'm sorry, April, if my time is right, somewhere around that timeframe, but we're looking at close to almost nine months to a year they've originally applied. The CUP process, CUP process is difficult, it's long sometimes. And if this process could have been worked through that timeframe, we wouldn't be sitting here today. But unfortunately, that's not the case. And we do hear a lot of delays in the processes, and no fault to our staff that are on, they're working hard. But these things seem to, do take time. And I feel that it'd be, I agree with the applicant saying, I think it's injustice for us to keep their business from operating during this type of time. I feel that with the modifications made by the applicant, by removing the debris on site, by ceasing the use of the carports that are on site, by removing like electrical and water on site, I think they have shown due diligence to try to work with our county to be able to proceed forward. And I think it is an motion I would like to make after I hear from my fellow commissioners. I would like to make a motion on this, but I'm in support of keeping this operational moving forward while they process CUP. And I would hope that we can allow them to process a CUP while they're going through operations and allowing to stay open. So that's my comments right now, and I'll turn it over to fellow commissioners before I make a motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Judge. Ms. Skidmore?
I have one question first off, and maybe for code compliance. When a business is purchased or there's a transfer of ownership, does code compliance do any type of review?
Code compliance is complaint-driven. So that means if there was a complaint, if code compliance had an open investigation, that was because there were several complaints or at least one complaint made on site.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you to my fellow commissioner judge for being more eloquent than I will be. So I will say, you know, my family is over 100 years in agriculture business, and, you know, we operate over 6,000 acres of cattle ranching. And just like Commissioner Judge said, there is no way every element that we do on a daily basis is safe or that we're focused on, you know, kind of all these violation focuses. It's just not what you do. You're a family-owned business, and you kind of operate at your own risk. And I'm struggling, because if I were to try to fix, let's say the county were to come to me, even though I've been in existence for 50, 10, 100 years, and the county were to come to me and say, you have some violations, you know, even though policy changes on a yearly basis, I would say, okay, I'm going to do my best to fix it. And now I'm being told, even though I'm doing the right thing, I have to stop an entire business operation that I've been doing for a decade or longer. And I just, I can't fathom it. I can't wrap my mind around, you know, our own government agency saying, sorry, you can no longer continue to feed your family. And I'm struggling, because if the, if the family and the business wasn't trying to do the right thing, and they weren't trying to take the right steps, then I might have a different opinion, but that's not the case here. So that's kind of where I'm at, and that's my opinion.
Hey, Ms. Skidmore. Mr. Ashley, would you like to comment?
Sure, thanks. I, I feel the same way. I think, you know, a business that survived through, through the pandemic, you know, was kind of starting to reverse what we've just come through. It's, it's a huge deal. And, and just merely the cessation of operations for just a little while could have a serious impact on that. And maybe, maybe that's the death knell for your business. And so I, I take the environmental and safety issues really, really seriously. I, I'd like to see a pathway forward as well. I'd like to see us design some conditions and design some, you know, some safeguards that would help abate the, the safety, immediate safety issues while they, you know, in earnest go down the path of the CUP and, and the environmental review. I'd like to see that work. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashley. I had, I had a, I had some questions for the appellant. If, come forward, please. Appreciate it. First and foremost, how did this issue come about?
You mean the, the violation?
Yes, how, just kind of go through how, how, why are we here right now? What happened?
So back in April of '21, there was a, there must have been a complaint. I mean, we don't really ever get to find out from code enforcement, but there was a complaint likely filed on the site. And at that time, the code, code officer would go out, look at it, say, okay, it looks like there's a violation, and they would send a notice to the, to my client, Mr. Rangi. And then at that point, Mr. Rangi, you know, looked at the violation notice and said, I don't know what to do. You know, I'm, I'm a trucking guy, I'm not a, you know, a planner or an engineer. So he hired us, Quadnoff, to take a look at the violation. And so we looked at it, and we said, well, you need to get us a CUP. And so we applied for the conditional use permit in August of '21. And then we waited for about six months until the county did their preliminary review. And we finally got that letter in February of 2022. At that time, the letter said, we noticed that there's an open case violation, you must go to a violation hearing. And so we did. We went to a violation hearing that was set in April. At that time, we appealed within the, the 10-day appeal period, we, we filed the appeal. And so then, you know, staff works to try to get that appeal onto your docket, and it's taken since April until now to get on the docket.
Understand. So basically, you answered an NOV, tried to do the right thing, and, and now you're here? But if you, what if you just answered the NOV without going through a CUP? What would have happened then?
Well, I, I don't want to speak for staff, but the zoning ordinance requires a conditional use permit to open, to do an, an agricultural trucking facility on the site. So the only way to abate that would be to completely stop operation. And so instead of completely stop operation, we decided to apply for the CUP to help abate that violation.
Okay. But this was something that was running for 10 years prior or whatever, and were there any issues before this NOV?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Why, why was code enforcement rebuffed? What, what happened there? Why were they not allowed on the property? Can that be, was there a reason for that?
I, I think that's a little bit of a mischaracterization.
Well, that's what was stated, so.
Sure, sure.
I'm not even sure if a code compliance person came out there. I, I'm not even sure what time they took those pictures, but we can have somebody come out there. If they want to look at a yard, that's fine. I haven't turned anybody back. I'm not sure if somebody was at the yard and they hadn't sent it back, because we've had some kind of minor theft in the yard that happens sometimes, you know, so that's why we don't like to allow people that we do not know to be on the site. But when code compliance officer, whoever came by, I was not there, so I, I don't know if this issue.
So you don't know if they identified themselves or anything like that? You have no idea? This was never checked, in other words?
No, correct. Nobody's approached me saying that they came to my yard to take pictures to look. I, I'm not even sure, I'm surprised they have those pictures.
So, so code compliance may or may not be telling the truth, that they visited and identified themselves?
I am not sure. I'm not saying they're lying, but it's, they've never approached me or any of my family members.
I think, I think maybe Mr. Hall might want to weigh in as well. Code, code compliance doesn't have the right to enter property. They can, they can visually inspect, or they could, you know, ask to go on the property, but I don't think they have just the inherent right to enter a property without a warrant.
Yes, Mr. Hall, please.
If I may, Chairman, on page four of the staff report, it says code compliance have not been able to enter the project site without a warrant. It doesn't identify who turned them away. The, the owner has said it might have been a staff member of his that didn't know he should let him on. I, I see no indication why that wouldn't be the case. And if somebody just out of the blue shows up at my house and with a badge and wants to go inside, I would hope my daughter would say, hit the street too. But, so I don't think we should take anything negative or put anything negative to that aspect, but we do have an issue with this that I think this board should consider, and maybe the, I'm going to suggest the appropriate courses for this board to table this item to a following hearing, and here's why. We, we seem to have a real issue today about health and safety. If there is in fact unlawful connections of electrical, you can't beat that. That's health and safety. There's nothing, that's a health and safety issue, plain and simple. And code compliance needs to be able to go out there and confirm the, the applicant And code compliance needs to be able to go out there and confirm the applicant's statement now that they've shut off the electrical. By continuing the hearing, you will allow that to occur. And you'll have information and findings you can base your determination of whether or not there's a health and safety problem on it. Another one that jumps out at me is it appears at some point in time, truck repairs were being done at this facility. I think it's been admitted. Not having running water on site where you're doing truck repairs or any automotive repair frankly, is absolutely a health and safety problem. As anybody who's ever worked on a vehicle will tell you, you get splashed with gasoline, diesel, oil, any in your face, you need a wash facility immediately. So if we need to confirm also that they're not doing repair with no running water or an alternative source of flushing eyes out washing, you know, alternative.
You can put portable eye wash stations on it.
You absolutely could. That would be an option if you didn't have running water. But my point is, right now, we don't know that that's there. And if they are in fact still working on vehicles, that would be a health and safety issue. If they've in fact stopped, then that health and safety issue is less. I mean, you clearly don't need running water if all you're doing is parking a vehicle somewhere. So I would suggest, based on the issues we have right here of needing to confirm the electricity alone, that the board consider, rather than making findings which I don't know that we can sport in the record right now, that there's no health and safety problem, that you consider extending this out, tabling the item, continuing it to a future date so that code compliance can go out there and confirm the health and safety issues at least.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Definitely take that advice. I have a couple more questions before we continue, would like to finish. But thank you for all your comments here. They're very, very enlightening. So I'm assuming that you have insurance on this property and it's been looked at from that aspect. What's the inherent risk right now on that property based upon what you know?
Our trucking company does, our trucking company does carry insurance on the property.
Okay.
And that insurance, like if there's theft of vehicles or if there's an injury regarding, you know, anything that happens with the truck to an employee, if they were getting in or out of the truck. So there is insurance on it, but I would have to get the full details of what exactly it covers.
Right, but to Mr. Hall's point, if you have the liability or umbrella, what other insurance you have, if you did not have safety, you're not the code from a safety standpoint, you could be held for a lot of money liability wise, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, okay. But you understand that now, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay, very good. One question, there is an accusation that your trucks are not smogged. I don't know if you want to speak to that or not. This is not under our jurisdiction, but someone made an accusation about that. How would, why would they make that accusation?
Our trucks are smogged, but there are a lot of trucks here in California that are not carbon compliant, or our trucks are, they have the smart way stick on the side of them. They're all, they're all smogged, they're all DEF, they're equipped with the right equipment. And the gentleman that came here and made those accusations is actually going through a legal battle with us regarding the temple. He's the one that turned to us and he's been very loud and obvious about that. He said it himself. He doesn't live anywhere near our property, or he doesn't live anywhere near the property. He just wanted to turn us in, in a vindictive way pretty much, you know, just to kind of get back to us on the legal lawsuits that he has going with the temple.
Okay, I just was curious about that since that accusation brought up. It has nothing to do with this really right now. So, but thank you. And then, and then one thing, I was going to comment about some of the zoning things. The city of Bakersfield, you know, had an aggressive zoning or annexation deal. And they took a lot of fingers and toes and everything in Bakersfield. And then they left a lot of stranded, I reckon, I've been here long enough to know that. And so, you know, some of these zoning things, you know, as a, as our board, we need to look at that, I believe, to make sure that these are correctly done within the context of what happened. Because there's plenty of properties that we found last, our last meeting, that should be, maybe should have been annexed and never were. And there's complaints about services. And I've talked to the county staff about that, about all our services and what's going on and where we're at. And, you know, the one comment that I got from county leadership is that we really don't want to discourage any more business than we have to. So, you know, the onus and the board supervisor probably very sympathetic to not stopping a business running because there's a very, as you know, there's probably going, or there's going to be a referendum on taxation that the county says, hey, we're not flush with funds exactly. So there's not a lot of ways to turn, you know, not a lot of desire to turn away business. So I just want to give you that background, you know, just knowing what's been going on last couple of meetings here. But is there anything else on this project that you can say, hey, you know, we didn't know or were led to believe something that wasn't happening? What, is there anything else there that you say, hey, we need clarification on?
I would just add, Chairman, I mean, just to speak a little bit on the comments that Mr. Hall made. I think we, I think we can move forward tonight. I think, you know, to address the two concerns, the no repairs, we've stated that we are not going to do repairs on site while we go through the CUP process. I think that can be made a condition of the approval of the appeal. And then, and then also for the verification from code compliance, I think we could just have a simple statement that code compliance would come out within the next 30 days based on their, you know, their processing time. It could be tomorrow if they want, but they could come out and the client would allow them to go on site and, you know, verify that the utilities that were offsite that were being brought on site were, have been severed and that they're no longer being used. I think that's a, it's a pretty easy step. And then we don't have to come back to your commission again just to do this all over.
No, and I agree that docket does get quite lengthy. And we, you know, we just only so much time with our, given our staff size and everything. I get that, we are, the timing of this, I will comment that it takes a long time to get through these processes. And I know and I sympathize with you. We often have, you know, hiccups and glitches. And it does take a lot of effort and patience to go through these. So I appreciate that. And, you know, the fact that you waited that long to get an answer, you know, tells me that, you know, how understaffed we might be. And, you know, that answer, in my, my thought, well, had you known right away this, we wouldn't be here today maybe talking about these things. So, you know, that's the process and understand. Mr. Judge, did you have a question?
I did, if you're done, Commissioner.
That's all the questions I had. Thank you very much, sir.
For the applicant, I just, I do want to ask a couple of questions. So in concerns to Mr. Hall's comments were, I just asked, blank, blank. Do you have any concerns with not using the structure on site, not parking any vehicles underneath the carport or using the facility for truck repair?
You know, it's very hot out there, so we want to use the carport for our drivers because sometimes they leave their vehicles out there for at least five to six days because that's how long they've been out on a trip, depending on where they go. But if the county doesn't want us to use it, I mean, you know, we're not going to fight you guys on it. We're going to stop using it just now. Our drivers really don't park under the structure anymore, they park in front of it.
So there's no issue with that on your part?
No.
And Saad, do you have any issue with the code compliance coming back out to verify electrical and water?
No, no, we don't have any issues.
Thank you, that's a long question then. So with that, with that being said, I want to echo my commissioner's statements here as well too. I think timing is difficult enough. I think tabling this item, all it's going to do is delay. I know this project was actually on a previous hearing day, which also was continued. So it does get trusted and lengthy. I think that, and we also have comments in our staff report saying that there was, they were unable to even evaluate the claims to even be valid that there was use of electrical and power and water. So I don't agree with the fact that we tell them, hey, we're going to continue you to verify something that we haven't even verified yet. So with that being said, if no other comments, I'd like to prepare a motion.
Please do.
I'd like to make a motion to allow the facility to keep operations while we are proceeding with the CUP process with the condition that code compliance can come on site within 30 days to verify water and the use of truck repair on site. Does that seem feasible for a motion?
Actually, I would like to, I would like to kind of put things in a little bit of perspective. There will be no conditions for this, as this is not a project that is conditionable. These are stipulations that your commission would make. However, staff does agree with Mr. Hall in that there are so many variables on this site. One of the reasons that we didn't write any condition, any, excuse me, stipulations for this is because there are so many things on site. We would need time to figure out exactly how to make this site safe. During the whole time of the processing and during the complaint driven compliance, this trucking facility has been operating. They have not stopped operating. So we have not stopped any business from occurring until this time that we are addressing the safety issues that are on site. Staff does believe that we should, we would recommend that your commission continue this to a later date so that we can evaluate the situation on site to give you possible stipulations that would make finding one palatable to allow for the site to continue if that's what you, your commission would like.
So I guess I have a question, but since we just, they have insurance, it's their liability, they're completely, they're a risk on that. It's, there's no risk to the county.
Actually, and Mr. Hall, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but if you allow for this to continue, it will be actually the liability of the county as it was the decision of the commission.
Well, we, but we found no violations. We don't have evidence of a violation, that's my point.
There is evidence of a violation as stipulated by the appellant. They, they signed, one of the five findings that have to be made is that if you find that there are no violations on site, then there are no stipulations to be made. But you also have to also make sure that, number one, you find that there are no safety concerns on site.
Right, but they stipulated that they, they gave you that, oh, yeah, violation, oh, then we corrected it. So it's, so they basically said they found it and then they corrected it.
With staff's evaluation, and by the way, all the pictures were taken offsite. We don't know what's on site necessarily to even know if there are more issues that could be a safety issue.
But code enforcement hasn't given you any indication there is a violation, is there?
As far as, I'm, I'm sorry.
What did, what did code enforcement say about the violation? Did they give you?
Well, you can bring Officer Pritchard up.
I mean, what was the violation? I'm trying to get to that point. What was the?
The violation is that they're operating a trucking facility without the proper building permits or land use approval.
Right.
You must have an approval of a conditional use permit to operate an agricultural trucking facility.
Sure. I'm just saying there was no, there was no finding by the county that there was this in place. They self-reported that they were using utilities and then they self-reported they stopped using them. That's what we're saying, right?
No, there is no, there's no address assigned to the site. So therefore, electricity and infrastructure cannot come onto the site legally.
Yeah, Chairman, if I may, whether or not they're using electricity legally, appropriately, and with inside building permits is a pretty easy task to determine. Do they have a utility connection with a public utility? We have not heard that they do, which means that they are not using electricity legally. If they're not using electricity legally, we don't know right now whether or not that's a fire hazard or not. And until code compliance can determine whether or not that's a fire hazard, it would be inappropriate for this board to determine there's no health and safety risk at this point in time. That is why I'm suggesting a continuance to determine if in fact you can make a finding that there is no health and safety problem by allowing code compliance to go on there. The same situation we've had leading up to this meeting with one other continuance so far. The operation is still operating and has been through that time. And code compliance can go out there and determine what, if any, issues there are with the electricity. I mean, all the other issues about, you know, operating without a CUP on something that's going to be the same operation once it gets a CUP or whether or not a shade structure that's got a car parked under it that nobody is inside, those are health issues to an extent. But illegal electrical connections is a definite serious concern. Also, if you look at some of these pictures here, one thing that I noticed in the pictures of this facility and the others that it was compared to is, I didn't notice many except for one, which I wasn't even sure if that was the one that's currently under violation, that has trucks backing up two residential fencing. There was one that showed a two lane street, at least two lanes from what I could see from here. So you had setbacks in case of fire. We don't have that here. I'm not saying that this maybe won't go forward in 60 days, 30 days, whatever you set the next hearing date that you won't be able to make these findings. But right now, we have a staff report that seems to be uncontradicted other than statements we don't have electricity out there now, which I gotta say are a little problematic because there's an electric gate and stuff. So we need to have more information on that subject. Because you could literally make a finding today, there's no health and safety, and code compliance could go out there and red tag it tomorrow for building permit violations. That, that is, that is, that is what I'm seeing today in the facts in front of me. Is we, I could be coming in tomorrow in the office and building, code compliance coming in and saying, Phil, we're red tagging this for building permit problems. So that's why I would suggest the continuance. I will extend, suggest the continuance, the operation would happen as it has, as it had yesterday before this hearing. And code compliance can find out if that's a true problem or not.
So I do appreciate all the comments and what you're saying. And I'm just going, frankly, I'm trying to get, speak on this is, I think as Commissioner earlier spoke about, Commissioner Skidmore, that the reality is, is a lot of these properties, if we want to, could be red tagged and filed comments on all across our county. And we can, as a county, be that strict and find those faults if we want to. I think there's a lot of violations can be across the board. The issue I see here is we are commenting on electrical and water that has not been verified by our code compliant officer at all. So we are making a suggestion to shut a facility down based upon an assumption that was put out, none of that's been verified. So with that, and again, today, we are not determining a CUP. We're just determining if we can allow a business to continue to operate and turn over an appeal option and allow the CUP process to complete. And that is what this situation is. That's what the CUP process is for, to allow, to find out what conditions can be put on a site, what environments can be on, that is what CUP process is for. So I do appreciate the comments. With that, I would ask that, okay with the applicant, to make a request of staff to allow code compliance to verify within the next 30 days if there's any electrical water being used. Is there any issue with me asking of the staff?
No, and we can also continue this to the next hearing, which I believe is August 11th, because we're not having a hearing next.
Again, I appreciate that. I personally don't want to continue this because I feel that all that does is, this process has been going on for over a year. They have taken a long time to get to this board today. As a developer, as understanding, when things can continue, something else just brought other problems get up. I think the question is, do we allow this facility to operate while we're processing the CUP? I agree and want to make a motion to allow this facility to operate while they continue their CUP. And my request is to allow code compliance within the next 30 days to check the site because there's been no verification. And if there is, then code compliance can follow the process like it has in the past prior. So that is my motion and I would.
So I would, sorry, just to, if they were to go out in the next 30 days and you made a stipulation that they can continue working, you make all the findings, all five findings that they can continue operating, and you make the stipulation that code compliance goes out, and they do find a violation on site, then we end up taking them again to another violation hearing with the director, with the director's hearing.
And I think I understand that correctly.
Okay.
Mrs., I do understand that, but if that is okay, that's the process. That's the process.
Okay, I just want to, I just want you to understand that that would also take more time than possibly taking the steps to make sure that this site is safe.
I understand, I'm completely, thank you. So that's my motion, and I would go from there.
So I think, I want this to go forward as well. I want them to continue operating while the CUP application is being processed. I do believe the points that, that our counsel gave to us are valid. And it's, and it's kind of an insurance policy really for all of us to have code compliance go out there and look. It does save time from coming back to a director's hearing. It basically, not only is it just another meeting, it's two more meetings at least, you know, and having code compliance go, and then, you know, having the director's hearing if it gets to that point. So I think a delay to the 11th would theoretically give all the time necessary for code compliance to go out and look and, and give us the safeguards that, not all of us. to go out and look and, and give us the safeguards that, not all of us.
And what if they don't?
If they don't meet it, then we shouldn't have allowed them to start operating.
No, what if they don't go, code compliance decides, hey, we're not going out there, we can't, we are too busy. What happens then?
I think we could probably figure out sometime that code compliance could get there. We have, I have an officer in the room, he could kind of tell us their schedule and if that's a realistic thing. If he says it's going to be 90 days before I can even show up, then that's a different, that's a different perspective.
Yeah. Mr., I appreciate your comment, and my concern with that would be is, is again, we are sitting here, being continued how many times this project, they got here, this project is, code compliance came out, they applied in last August to try the CUP process. I think they've had ample time to verify in this concern, and up until this moment we have till they haven't verified anything. Again, is, I think the ask of us today is, is can this business operate while they are going the CUP process? We approve CPs all the time. I mean, if someone goes out after CUP is approved and goes out and violates some of the conditions of CUP, they could shut down a CUP as well. So now are we liable as a commission then, that we approved a CUP and someone didn't follow the guidelines of CUP, and they get coded and they come back for the processes? I think the applicant has made tremendous efforts to correct whatever conditions he has on his facility to show good faith. And I think if this applicant is going to, to make a violation, something of that nature in front of this commission today, I think that at that point, he has every right to be shut down, he's made very clear of what his conditions are. But I think dragging this portion on longer, containing this process, finding more reason to cause comments and concerns, and allowing a business not, to loom over their head with this issue is stressful enough. I think we've finally gotten here, I would like to see this proceed, but I'd love to have any of the comments on that as well. So that is my hope, and I think there are processes in place that anyone can put to check on a CUP or a code issue. And again, we could, they could do the CUP, get approved, they could be in violation of their CUP conditions the next, right next day, and staff could shut them down again. I mean, that's kind of the CUP process is for.
And in my mind, and the difference is, the CUP, the CUP is what gives us the teeth, and it gives the folks the teeth to go out there. It may just be more than these two or three things, it may just be more than the Paul Barn, the electrical thing. I think, for me, that was the point, is like, is that the scope? Is this, you know, are there things going to be identified that you don't even know if they can fix it in 30, 60, 90 days? You don't know if, if at some point, you know, you've really got a monster out there. I'm not saying there is, and I don't think there is. A continuance is basically an insurance policy for us. And the continuances that we've had, like, we've actually never heard the case, you know, we've never heard any of these things presented to us before. I want the, I want the project to go forward as well. And you're right, the ultimate issue is, do we allow them to keep operating during the application process? I can tell you right now, my answer for that will be, heck yes, I want them to continue to operate during the CUP process, just want to kind of know that in order for us to do that, we have to be able to get past that first finding, which is a health, safety, a health and safety thing.
It's been operating for 10 years.
It's been operating for 10 years.
That's half my point.
Yeah.
So can I ask staff if the motion that's on the table, is that clear enough to move forward? So your commission would have to make the finding that it is safe on-site, given the stipulations that you would write to recommend that they continue on-site, operating during the interim of the processing of the conditional use permit. So you would have to make findings that state that it is safe due to whatever you decide. And then you would have to write the stipulations that would allow for the applicant to continue operating on-site in a safe manner.
And Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
That is the issue that your legal counsel has here. On page seven of the staff report, "Infrastructure for utilities such as water and electricity cannot be approved through the agencies for this property because it doesn't have an address." That means it doesn't have a legal electrical connection. The next paragraph says electricity is being used on the property. We need to verify that that's not being done to make the finding that there's no health and safety for the electricity. As I've said, this is the one that gets me, is the electricity.
Well, it has a generator, Mr. Hall. There's a generator.
He says that, but there's also discussions about whether or not that's actually what's going on. So that needs to be verified, because right now, I will, I will say this, right now, I think you have, the code compliance department has enough to seek an inspection warrant on this property to discover whether or not it is properly having electrical connections. Unauthorized illegal electrical connections are a definite fire hazard. That's why I would suggest, again, we continue this to make sure that that fire hazard potential isn't there, because I don't see right now the record for it. If I had something other than their assertion they're not using electricity, which I believe the assertion was they're not using it anymore, actually, which meant they were at some point using it. Maybe I missed that.
They had a generator, you said, they had a generator on-site, but they're no longer functioning using. I think that's what the, they weren't saying they were tied to electrical with a generator on-site, they were not using any longer. And the hard time I'm having with.
Can we confirm, can we confirm that? Do you?
Have the applicant come up-site? Can you confirm that it was a generator that you had on-site, you're no longer using?
We are no longer using the generator, and for the gate that we use, it's for, it's at a solar panels, that's how we get the power to just use the gate. It's not, you know.
It's a low voltage system that runs a little, you know.
It's just a small motor that it runs on and just, it's very old school, you know, it's not, it's nothing fancy.
And if I, if I can, Chairman, I just want to add that finding number one does not say that there's no, there can't be any, any health or safety issue. It says resultant potentially significant.
You're correct.
Potentially significant, and I think that's a very, that's a very important point in this, because I've heard staff now say, well, there's a, there's, you can't make the finding because there's a health and safety issue. It's not that there's a health and safety issue, a potentially significant health and safety issue.
And to your point, I don't see any, that's my point, I'm trying to figure out where we're seeing these, and they're, they're not visible to me, so to tell me that, oh, we have a health and safety issue, when there isn't any, I feel a little odd going back and saying, oh, well, we have a health and safety issue, therefore we must get code compliance out there. I think we're, I think you go, like, Ms. Skidmore said, you go to any ranch, any operation and find a health or safety issue, thus being one of them potentially that we go through a lot. So I'm not here to shut down businesses, so, you know, that's not why I'm serving here, but I do want to make sure this is unfair, and I do want to see the CUP for this, for sure, and I like to see how this goes, because we'll be hearing this again, and anything that's not going directly well with the CUP, I can assure you, we'll have a lot of scrutiny. But I don't see what it could have should have being a basis for doing administrative or other actions other than the fact that, because we could do it to anybody, and that's not, I don't think that's right, I just don't think that's right. But I know there's an issue here, and we need, there has been some violations and we need to address those, but at the same time, I don't see shutting down an operation to address relatively minor violations, not, we're not burning down the house here necessarily, we think we have some hazards. You know, I'm a little skeptical that we're really giving you a fair assessment of what's violated there, but that's just my opinion based upon what I'm seeing so far. Where I like code, sure, code compliance should verify, that's probably a good idea, given the situation, but honestly, code compliance can go at any time, anywhere and find problems if they were, if they had the time and effort, which they don't have a lot of time, because there's a lot of violations out there. And so that's why I'm also concerned that, that, you know, it's going to take time, it's taking time to do this, there's, the county is understaffed, I've talked to Ryan Alsop, and I know that for a fact, and I know there's a lot of issues with things like that, and that's concerning me a lot, when we have a lot of these things that are going on in the county, and we don't have the manpower, the people to go out and do all these things, and that's why we're behind and everybody else is behind in terms of getting, getting projects through and getting our economy going. So, you know, not to make a, you know, just making a point here, we have to be able to quickly address these things. I don't see how approving this would stop anything on the CUP, and certainly, if you're not able to get your CUP for whatever reason, this isn't going to stop, you won't have one, and then you will be shut down. So I think the CUP should go forward, and then we'll see from there if you're a viable business or not. But at this point, these findings are somewhat specious in that they're not really findings that this, we think, or someone said, or this, and it's like, well, at this point, we should have had those figured out, one, but by now, I think we can make a decision, yeah, we should go through with the CUP, get this, get this done, run this through, and then we can see, you know, based on our CUP, what this business is all about. I think we need to get to that goal line, and I think we're, I think at this point, given the time, we really shouldn't delay this anymore, I don't see there's any reason to. So I agree with Mr. Jodz in that respect.
I think you should make a second, Mr. McGiffney.
I second, the chair seconds Mr. Jodz's motion. Call the vote.
Three ayes, one absent, one abstained.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sorry, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't believe there's anything else on this, Ms. Simon.
Nope.
Thank you. Now we can move on to the next item in our agenda.
There's no generator.
Should I wait for the other two to come back so I can present? Okay. Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Simon.
Sure, no problem. The project before your commission is zone change case number 93, parcel map waiver case 11-19 of map 81. The applicant is Bel Air Oil Company by McIntosh, oh, sorry, I need to read the appeal for this, for the, for the appeal case.
Oh, okay.
So an appeal may be filed with the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department at 2700 M Street, Suite 100, Bakersfield, with a filing fee of $540 on forms available at the Planning and Natural Resources Department and on the department website. The filing must be made within 14 days of and including the date of the hearing. Sorry about that. I was concerned with moving on with the presentations. Let's see, okay, sorry. And this, the applicant for this project is the Bel Air Oil Company, and it's by McIntosh and Associates. The project site is bisected by James Road approximately a half mile east of State Route 65 in the Bakersfield area, north of Meadows Field, and is a total of 640 gross acres, and that's a parcel of record. The site is designated intensive agriculture and mine mineral and petroleum by the Metropolitan Bakersfield General Plan and is zoned A1. The project site is developed with oil field operations and an oil field water treatment facility. Adjacent properties include oil field operations, industrial uses, and a distribution center. The project specifically is a zone change in classification from A1 to A, and a parcel map waiver that is proposing the creation of a 40-acre parcel and a 599-acre parcel with a development variation to the land division ordinance to allow a 20-foot wide private access easement where 60-foot wide access easement is required. The applicant has indicated that the intent of the zone change is to bring the project into consistency with the underlying general plan designations, and the parcel map waiver is to separate the oil field, sorry, the oil field water treatment facility from the existing oil field operations. Bless you. During the course of the processing of this project, staff received 12 agency comments, and four of those letters included comments or recommended conditions of approval. Staff has included those recommended conditions of approval with the parcel map waiver as the zone change cases are not conditioned. As of this writing, oh, sorry, as this is speaking, comments and opposition have not been received. Staff is presenting this case tonight because the applicant has submitted a complaint in regard to condition of approval 5J, which requires the proposed easement to be paved. This is a section of, the proposed easement is 2,371 feet long. I think we have, if you can pull, yes, this right there. And the easement is this little line. Sorry about that. Right along here. Sorry, Ms. Knight is not completely familiar with this case. The area, sorry, the area that is proposed to be the easement has existed for many years on the site and is right now a dirt road. The applicant feels that because the road is traversable by their evaluation, that the road meets the standards for not including paving, and that because it is, it's compact dirt, there are no issues with the dust on-site because the employees on the site only utilizes the road once or twice a day. As a reminder, a parcel map waiver is processed when the project can meet certain standards. In this case, the project qualified under the land use ordinance 18 dash, sorry, 1830 030A, where a minor land division is proposed in which each parcel created has a gross area of 40 acres or more, and each resulting parcel, including any designated remainder, has approved access to a public street or highway. Parcel map waivers are subject to the same requirements as a parcel map, except for mapping. This means the parcel map waiver allows the applicant to process a certificate of compliance with the legal description and legal illustration, in lieu of going through the process of a final map, which can be more involved. Part of the requirements of a parcel map waiver is that the same improvements that would be imposed on a parcel map would be imposed on the parcel map waiver. This includes the land division ordinance section 18.55.030.A under street and road improvements. Specifically, under the type C improvements, which staff is recommending, it states that not only does the road need to be traversable, and even though road improvements may not generally be required, the road improvements must meet the requirements of the general plan under which the project is located. The project is located in the Metro Bakersfield General Plan area, which requires type A improvements unless a deviation is applied. Staff recommendation, staff's recommendation has taken this into consideration and is recommending type C road improvements, which is much less in terms of physical improvements than would be required with the type A road improvements, which is sidewalk, curb, and gutter. Type C is two inches of asphalt, I believe. In addition to staff recommending this requirement to reduce on, the, with this requirement is to reduce the dust on-site, the paving will provide safer ground surface material for emergency services vehicles to traverse in case of an emergency on-site, and because the site is close, in close proximity to Meadowfields Airport and a large distribution center, and ongoing commercial and industrial development to the southeast and west of the site in the metro Bakersfield area, the paving will promote cumulative improved air quality. With all this in mind, staff continues to recommend your commission, recommend the Board of Supervisors to approve the zone change as requested, and approve the parcel map waiver with associated development variation, subject to the recommended findings and conditions. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Simon. Is the applicant here this evening? Come on down. It's dark back there.
Good evening, Honorable Chairman and Planning Commissioners. I'm Whitney Jackson with McIntosh and Associates, and I'm here representing the owner and subdivider. On behalf of our client, we respectfully request the elimination of condition item 5J, which Ms. Simon discussed, requiring the access road to be paved. The beginning of that condition only requires that roads are traversable with no grading required. This access road has existed since 1937, so nearly 100 years. It's only used once or twice per day, on average, and It's only used once or twice per day, on average, and it is our opinion that the road meets the conditions of being traversable by a passenger vehicle, and the paving is not necessary, as the road is stable and not prone to create dust. Nor have there been any complaints about dust, which is usually the reason you have roads paved. And nothing has changed or is being proposed to change on the land, except for this creation of the parcel. So if this wasn't being proposed, the road would stay dirt from 100 years ago until 100 years from now. This condition will create an undue financial hardship on our clients, and it's just to create a new parcel for financial purposes only. Thank you. And I'm here if you need to ask any questions.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else like to speak about this project? Hearing and seeing none. Commissioners, open for discussion.
I'll just say I support the request for elimination.
Thank you, Mr. Judge.
I will also echo that. I think the point, the reason why I would support that is, this is just a parcel map modification. There's no improvements being made on the site, so I think it's unnecessary to ask the applicant to pave that much of a road. And when they do ever do process any type of building or facility or any type of structure on it, they will have to apply and go through that process, and that time that will be required. So with that, that's my reason supporting the applicant's request. And if there's no other comments, I can make, I won't make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the staff's recommendation of the project as written record with the modification to allow the applicant not to pave the road and allow it in current condition.
Just to remove item 5J.
That's, I can, I like that, is that a better way? How about make a motion to approve the project as written staff recommendation, remove condition 5J.
I'll second.
Four ayes, one absent, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think we are at the point of adjournment. Are you motion to adjourn?
Got a second?
Yep.
Okay, second? Second?
Okay, we second, second.
Everyone agrees.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
All ayes. See you next month.